Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January edition of the Lebanon Plan Commission meeting. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order, and I believe we have 100% attendance. Is that correct? Awesome. 100% attendance in January. Got to love it. Next item up is simply the approval of the minutes. As you recall, we had that special January meeting. So unless there's any discussion, I would entertain a motion on those.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. I see no old business on our agenda, thankfully, because we just met recently. Move right along into our new business. We have two items up this evening. First item is going to be docket number 24-54. This is Lebanon Community School Corporation requesting development plan approval for a new fieldhouse. Ben, what's your?
Thank you, Mr. Koots. Good evening, Plan Commission members on this balmy Tuesday evening. We'll start off here with the development plan application for the fieldhouse project at the Lebanon High School. If they want to pull up the screen, we'll just start by with the school property that you see outlined here in yellow. And what we've highlighted here in red is the location where the fieldhouse will be constructed. So you can kind of see here where the high school lays out, football field. It's in the area where there's now a little softball field and practice field will be constructed in this area that you see here in red. So they have some other parts of their project that are that scope that would be repaving parking lots, but in terms of any vertical construction at all would be taking place generally in this red box that you see located here. So that is the side of the project. To just go over just some general statistics on the project, let me find the correct page. This is an approximately 33,000 square foot sports fieldhouse facility. We located in that general area. They would also include a new entrance and walkways of the football field. So it's not, this won't be connected physically to the existing high school. There will be a walkway that is constructed that essentially runs from the parking lot back to the fieldhouse or the fieldhouse to the football field, filtering everybody through those two buildings and creating a new entrance back there. So that would also be part of the scope of this project would be adding those walkways to the football field. And that's essentially the scope of the project. So I will show you move then here to the general site plan. And this is zoomed in generally on that red box area. Just again, for purposes, this, what you see down here and the bottom part of this is that's the existing corner of the high school building. And then the residential lots that are west of this area, that's what you see represented in these boxes here, just directly west. So again, as you can see, here is the fieldhouse footprint that you see here in this area. This is the 33,000 square foot footprint. And then you see the walkway, the new walkways that they were, they're going to be constructing back to the football field coming off the parking lot there. So that's the general site plan, extent of the improvements. There's a lot of utilities in this area. Some that are going to have to be relocated. We don't need to go into all the detail, but there is still some discussion on how to handle a regulated drain that runs through this area, too. And so I know that the technical folks are still reviewing that and figuring out exactly what the proper solution for that would be, as it relates to a lot of the other utilities and their locations as well. But in terms of the general site layout, that's what you see here. This is essentially just a drive to provide access back to the utility area in the back of the building and also fire department to have access around the building. So that's the general layout that you see here. I will attempt then to scroll down to the landscape plan and the architectural renderings of the building. So you can get a better idea what the building looks like. So this gives you a little bit of, it's not all just on one plan, I guess, unless I scroll back, make sure. So again, this is the footprint of the building you see here. And because this is institutional zoning adjacent to residential property here, there is a buffer required. So that's what you see represented here. They do meet all the setback and buffer setback requirements, but there is a landscaping requirement. So they have provided that landscape buffer plantings along that west side, northwest side of the building between it and that first residential property, as you see there. And then in terms of other landscape improvements, it's moving too fast on me. Yep, I jumped past. There are a handful of other landscape areas that they're showing here that are east of the building and then also adjacent to that plaza walkway area that's between the two buildings going back to the football field. So primarily because there's not a whole, they're not doing any major improvements or new parking lot areas, the primary landscape requirements really entail that buffer between the building and those residential areas. And they're just providing some other landscaping, some of the public pedestrian areas that you see here. And then I will scroll one more time, pass the city standards to the architectural renderings. Yeah. So this gives you an idea, and this is obviously just a black and white, but the materials all match the existing high school building. And this just gives you an idea of the masonry materials that we're using. The top of the, the building height is a little over 31 feet. So it does meet all requirements of the zoning district in terms of height. And you can kind of see, this would be the west side of the building here. Or excuse me, this would be the west side of the building here, which is very similar, obviously, to the east side of the building. And then you can see the entrance on the south side of the building here as well. So that's just a quick overview of the site design details.
Real quick, Ben, just to pause you for a second, can you scroll just slightly? I believe the, what'd you call it, the western elevation?
Yeah.
So this is the one that would be nearest residential, correct?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure that was clear for.
Yep. Yeah. So this would face towards the northwest and towards those closest residential homes that are right there along that stretch. So they do have a couple of service doors to the back, but it's, 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 there's not going to be any major traffic or pedestrian traffic on this side of the building. It's really just service for the building itself. There's, there's a small service drive. Yeah, there's a small service drive to get back to, because all the utilities and stuff are on the backside of the building. So it'll allow the folks to get back there to be able to service those things and obviously also provide access for the fire department around the building, too, which is something that they require.
Sorry, but thank you.
No worries. No worries. So again, as I mentioned, we've got a lot of technical comments in here, and that's something that they're still working through. A lot of utility and drainage related comments that still need to get worked out related to the regulated drain that's underway. We don't anticipate that those would have any significant impact on the site plan, but they're still working through exactly how that's going to be accommodated. In terms of the parking, they're able to accommodate the parking requirements for this building with their existing parking area. So they weren't adding any parking. In terms of the lighting, they're not providing any additional parking lot lighting. It's already lit adequately. They are, you can kind of see on these elevations, there are wall packs along the building. Lights essentially will be attached to the building shining down. And so they do have some additional lighting associated with the building. We did request or are requesting that they finalize that lighting plan. So we can see that the photometrics will not affect that, that those homes that are directly adjacent to it. Usually those wall packs shine down and they won't. But we did ask them just to verify with the lighting and final lighting and photometric plan. Once they finalize that with their subcontractor, and then the signage, you can kind of see, they've got a couple of different places. Again, the school own home of the Tigers. I think they're redoing some of the signage on the existing building, too. But this is, this is the, the signage is being proposed for the new fieldhouse as well, and it does all applicable standards as well. So in terms of just final items for the approval, we have, staff has finds compliance with the UDO requirements for the subject site. We recommend approval of the development plan contingent on the following conditions. The most important one here is the addressing any remaining technical advisory committee comments. And then the second one, when they submit the final lighting and photometric plan to staff for review and approval prior to application for any building permits or site improvements. But that, we'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions from the commission for Ben?
Ben, are there any details on what's inside at all?
It's the sports courts.
Just all sports courts?
Yeah.
Any?
I'll let the applicant walk through that more with you, but it is, I think it is primarily the hardcore sports.
He might be able to answer the other question. Relative to the other auxiliary, current auxiliary gym, what's the height? Are they about the same?
This one may be a little bit shorter, but again, I'll let them verify for you.
Any other questions for Ben before we have the applicant step up?
Did you say that there's going to be additional parking for this?
There is not. They'll use the existing parking for this. This wouldn't very often conflict with other events taking place at the school. So they're able to essentially share the same parking areas with school.
Other questions from the commission? Would the applicant care to speak? If you could, just introduce yourself, please, and let us know who you're representing.
Yeah. So I'm Bob Ross, Wshman Associates. We are the architect on record for Lebanon Schools. So I'll just go through a couple of things, try to answer as many questions as I can. So a couple of things, as part of the scope, we are doing a building addition as well for a locker room, for a football locker room on the north side of it. We are changing the signage in the front. There's a tiger head out there now. We're just modifying that and updating it. There is some additional lighting that's going to be part of that pathway that gets you from the parking lot to the football field. And then inside the aux gym, it is primarily a student use, and it's going to be for students and gym class and things like that. So that's the main use out of that. But it is three courts. There will be some batting cages, drop down volleyball nets, those type of things. But it is three sport courts. So volleyball, all the typical things that you can use in there, but it is a gym primarily for the students during PE. And then I think the other question was about the height compared to the existing aux gym. I believe they're very similar and maybe just slightly under, but I don't know that number off the top of my head. And then, as mentioned, there are quite a few utilities that we have to work around. The drainage as well as one of the big key things there. I believe we've sent comments back. So we're still working through all of that. They may use it for some athletic, but the primary use will be for PE. So that was, there is a canopy that connects kind of between the existing high school and the aux gym so that students can get between there during the school day.
Bar city plays, like some of these Christmas times, they have like four or five schools.
So I believe it's going to be still, everything's still going to be used as it is today. So we'd just be providing extra space if needed for potentially like a freshman game or anything like that. But again, right. So the, any high school game would still be played on the main gym. But like if it's a tournament or something like that, that is not the primary use or their, their main goal out of that aux gym.
Other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much. This item does, of course, require a public hearing. So I will officially open the public hearing on docket number 24-54, which is the Lebanon High School Field House. If you have comments, please feel free to step to the microphone. Try and limit your comments to three minutes. And that's it. Come on up.
Whoever.
Yep. If you'll just let us know who you are for the record. And then after you're done speaking, if you can write it down over there, it makes Kelly's life easier.
Okay. My name's Donnie Anderson, and I live on Yulin Drive. And I've lived here since the eighties. I graduated from the high school. I have some concerns. One is, none of you folks live around there, I don't think. And you should, I'll try to make it as simple. I'm not a very good speaker. It's amazing to watch Andy Griffith and have 600 drums beating in the background. I can't, I've changed windows. I've done things to the inside of the house. What I'm trying to say is, in the forties, Parkwood Edition was built. In 1958, the high school was built without a gym or pool. I know our school's getting big. I love Lebanon football. I love the band. But we have graduated amongst the ranks of big schools. And we have sound systems on the football field that matched colleges. And you were to be at my house. And all I'm saying is, five, six nights a week, the band's good. I know when they make a mistake. And it's just, it's a bombardment. It's just like, I mean, and used to, it wasn't so bad. You know, it's two or three nights a week. You know, the band's pretty decent. Football team's pretty great. I love football there. I played football on that field, too. But I think the school needs to try to remember when they moved in and when all the neighbors moved in. And we all want to be good neighbors. Now, this building you're going to build is going to be around 300 by 100 feet. Because it's going to be around 30,000 square feet. You haven't lived until you've seen the traffic down through there. I mean, it's amazing. Outer Drive, they park up and down the streets. They talk about no parking. I understand that. Maybe they're trying to save money or maybe they're going to add it later. It's just between the noise and the people, our crowds are getting bigger. I mean, maybe we need a Lebanon South High School. And then if we build this fieldhouse here, how long is the high school going to be there? I graduated in 71. How long will this new expenditure on this fieldhouse be good for? I mean, I don't get it. I mean, I want our school to have what we need, and we got it. We got astroturf. I think that's great. But somebody up here needs to listen. There's a lot of folks that are elderly, live over there, myself. It's not comfortable. Until that band decides to knock it off, you're going to go to bed. And I know the school superintendents and they don't live over there by us. I know there's some people on Grant Street, maybe they're not concerned about. Maybe their house is built better. All those homes were put up by a place in Lafayette, Indiana, and they're three inches thick. You hear everything. And it didn't used to be so bad, but now it's just getting worse. And now you're going to build a fieldhouse. It's going to be right up in our back door, so to speak, which, how long will it be before they want to build a parking lot back there behind it? And there's a natural swale through there that drains everybody's property. So there's a lot of concerns. I mean, I know I can't stop the big wheel turning here, but the city of Lebanon could surely go back and listen to a guy that's lived here for a long time and see, try to see what I'm saying. I'm, like I say, I'm not the best speaker, and I've never been up here on this podium before. But there's concerns outside of, it's great. Lebanon's got all this stuff. It is great. But there's people, there's, there's a community around that school, and it was there before the school was ever built. And I think that they got to understand that. I mean, Lebanon High School is crowded. The only way you're going to get a bigger parking lot is start buying houses on Park Street and Yulin Drive. And I think they're going to buy a house on, right there next to where they're going to build, to my understanding. I might be wrong. But if you take us out, say they buy all up and down Yulin there to make everything bigger for a bigger parking lot, then you're going to deal with Yulin Country Club, and they're not going to put up with the noise. We're the buffer. We're the buffer right now. So my, my concerns is the noise, the parking, the traffic, and the drainage, and how long will it be before they want to go connect the parking lots from all the way to the administration building, all the way to the back of this? And then how many nights a week are they going to participate in there? And how much noise will there be? You know, there's a noise level in Lebanon. And all of us have to obey it, even the school. And so far, the school hadn't been doing that. I talked to one of the principals at the school a while back about the noise on the band. And, and he told me, said, well, he goes, maybe we could ask him to turn it down. And they did. And that helped. But it's not only just a school. Sometimes the school will go visit other places and they'll come in. I've seen professional bands pull in, and they know how to get it on with their drums and their horns and stuff. But you got to remember, we live there. And we lived through it all. And it's not just one night a week. And so I beg you to think about this a little bit. I mean, I know the school's got the money to do it, and I'd like for them to have it. But how, how can they just keep coming over and over and farther and farther and noise and noise? How much, I mean, the football games? I love the football games. I love the noise. But they only play one a week. If we build this fieldhouse, how often is it going to get used? Every night? Are we going to have traffic every night? Has anybody thought about this? Probably not. Maybe they don't care. But you know, we've got, if some of us die of a heart attack, which we will, the ambulance, the fire truck, and police department, they got to be able to get up, down Yulin Drive. And that's, that's all, that school is not, was, when it was there, there was nobody else there. Like I said, in the forties, Parkwood Edition was there. And in 58, the high school was built, or right there about. So please take in consideration what I had to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, I will go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting on this particular item. Excuse me. Any additional questions from the commission for Ben? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion then on.
Is there anybody from the school corporation even here?
The architecture representative is here.
I guess my question, too, just would be, the traffic, like what he brought up, what are they anticipating? Is it going to be primarily during the school day? Or is it going to be more?
Kind of going back to what Bob said, it's primarily used for as an auxiliary gym for PE for the school. So that wouldn't generate any additional traffic. Now, they may, over time, start adding events there.
That was my question about what they're going to use for.
It's, it's.
If it's just to practice and that kind of thing, that's one thing. But if you start playing other big tournaments and different things.
Right.
Do you have a schematic on seats in the building, or is that not?
There is. I don't know. Do you have the interior? It's not going to be like the main gym where you have a bunch of bleachers that are tip and roll, where they fit 50 to 100 people. And there's maybe four or five of them. But as I mentioned, the, the main use is for PE and then after school for weights and, and practice and all that sort, right? So in the wintertime, baseball can practice in there, and then basketball can still play on the main court. Now, will they use it for things, maybe on a Saturday, potentially? But again, that is not, on the weeknights, that is not their main plan. And they also are planning to use, like have band practice in there. We, we set a tower specifically on a middle, middle line so that the band director can be in there. So that, that would actually help drive some of that noise, as mentioned, but.
And could be inside the facility?
That is correct. Yep. On the third court, closest to kind of storage and things like that, towards the north end, would be used for some marching band, band practice. So yeah, it's a multi-purpose. So baseball can practice in their basketball, volleyball band. Everyone can practice in there. And that's really the main thing. They, they ran out of space on places for people to practice and PE itself, too. So. Yeah, it's got to meet energy code. So it is going to be insulated and meet all those, those requirements.
Minimize what gets out.
That is correct. Yep. Yeah. Yep.
I mean, it's also possible that this is actually going to help with sound on the west side, wouldn't it? Because you're actually going to be 31-foot tall building long. I mean, that's going to be the buffer now. When you talk about buffers, I would think that that could probably only help on that west side.
Right. So that, that would help from the games or any practice on the field. I mean, I don't have the calculations or anything to prove that, but I believe it would help. But I believe the band may practice in different areas. So it would not help with that specifically. But if there's things on the field that are causing noises, that, that's, it definitely can't hinder it.
Any other questions from the commission for either the applicant or Ben?
I have a question. I've been trying to think of how to formulate this. We've talked about drainage a couple of times, and it sounds like that's still kind of up in the air, still an unresolved issue. So it's, if I'm correct on that, it's at some point in time, then are you responsible for getting back with Ben about the updates, about the progress? Because I know there have been drainage issues in the neighborhood, in the vicinity in the past, as was alluded to by the gentleman who spoke a moment ago.
Yeah. So I was going to make sure, Ben, we have responded to, Carrie, I think, is the third party reviewer for the drainage, responded to those comments on the drainage part of it. So we are actually helping drainage on the portion of, right, you guys have a requirement of like point one and point two five to meet on added acreage. So we are detaining water to slow down in that area to improve that. What the concern is, is the drainage, regulated drain that goes kind of east, west, north of the building. To put the building there, we have to put it on top of that pipe. So we have to reroute that pipe. So that doesn't change the drainage that's going to be used there. It's just moving that pipe. And that's kind of a conversation with, with Kevin and the county, because that's actually owned or regulated by the county right now.
In essence, that will improve the drainage situation.
Because of the requirements set forth by the city of Lebanon, we, we would be improving it because of the requirements. And, and the part that's kind of still in question is just rerouting of an existing pipe. So we're not, really not changing a whole lot on, on the drainage side of it. But any runoff that has been created by our project will meet the city standards.
Okay. Great. Thank you. That helps.
Yep.
Any additional questions? So seeing none, I would go ahead and open the floor for motions on docket number 24-54, which is the Lebanon High School Field House project.
I'll make a motion to approve the subject development plan contingent on the following conditions. Tac comments, the applicant adequately addresses any remaining city of Lebanon technical advisory committee comments prior to application for any building permits or site improvements. And a lighting plan, the applicant must, the applicant submit the final lighting and photometric plan to staff for review and approval prior to application for any building permits or site improvements.
We do have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. We'll do a simple vote on this one. All those in favor, please signify with an eye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And thank you very much for your comments as well. Next item up on our agenda is actually letter C. Letter B was continued on to February. C is docket number 25-2. C is docket number 25-2 and this is in regards to a rezoning request. Ben, do you have some details for us?
I'll wake this up first, of course. Right. And maybe just for the record, maybe I'll expand upon the item B continuance. So that would be the docket 25-1 gratis land development and it's their P U D amendment for the Spring Creek development that's up on the north side of town at 39 and 300. That P U D amendment is continued to the February 18th meeting. So just want to make sure in case anybody was watching, curious about that, that we, I mentioned that specifically before we move on here. And let me get the right holder up. All right. So we've had a couple of applications like this in the last few years. This is an application by S K Sunrise LLC and the property is 434 North Mountain Zion Road. It is a rezoning request. This is the existing subway that's out in the, at the north side of the business park. And so the reason for the request, a little bit of history here. So when this business, when the business park was developed and the unified development ordinance at the time, we had a zoning district called Planned Business and that was essentially a catch-all for all commercial industrial and industrial zoning uses. So it basically allowed everything and the business park was on Planned Business. When we did the U D O update about 10 or so years ago, the, the Planned Business District was split into Planned Business Commercial and Planned Business Industrial Zoning District. And there was some crossover of permitted uses between the two, but the intention primarily was to separate the commercial retail uses and the Planned Business Commercial and the industrial uses to Planned Business Industrial. At that time, the entire business park was zone Planned Business Industrial. So some of these uses, these commercial retail uses out here actually became non-conforming uses because they weren't permitted in Planned Business Industrial. This is one of those and it remained Planned Business Industrial. It was a legally existing non-conforming use and it wasn't really an issue. And in our most recent U D O update last year, we just made the general transition from Planned Business Industrial to Light Industrial and kept everything zoned the same. So again, still the same issue, it's not really the right zoning district for the use that's there. So S K Sunrise approached us, they have some investment ideas for that site and now it becomes an issue that it's not zoned correctly for commercial retail uses. And so we said the first step before we actually investigate any potential development of the site or any potential additional investment is to get it rezoned appropriately to our commercial retail zoning classification, which in this case would be general business. We actually did a rezone like this for the hotel to the west about three or four years ago, I think, probably before some of you were on the plan commission, some of you may recall that. So that one actually is already zoned general business because it made the transition in the, in the, in the zoning ordinance update last year. And so this one, they're essentially looking to match that general business zoning classification of the hotel to the east. And actually it might make some sense for staff to look at just rezoning all the commercial retail uses out here appropriately to the general business. But in this case, and, and this instance, we're just moving forward the rezones as the property owners request them. So that is the request is before you hear tonight is to rezone from light industrial to general business. The site that you see here, it's a little over one acre, about 1.3 acres. And then in terms of the zoning ordinance requirements for, to consider a rezone, there are a series of criteria. The first is the consistency with the comprehensive plan. And we did note in the staff report that the subject property is designated for commercial uses on the future land use map. So the subject rezonated general business would be consistent with the comprehensive plan designation. Criteria number two is compatibility with adjacent uses. So just identify here, you have north of the site, across 32, it is actually zoned white industrial also, but it is a series of commercial uses. East of the site, again, is zoned light industrial, but it is a series of commercial uses. West of the site I mentioned is now zoned general business and again, commercial uses. And then south of the property, again, zoned white industrial, but you have some commercial uses and you are starting as you go southwest to transition to more of the, the typical industrial uses in the business park, but directly adjacent to our, our commercial uses. So again, given the fact that they're requesting a rezone to commercial and it's primarily adjacent to commercial uses, we do find that, that the request is compatible with those existing land uses. Criteria number three is the desirability of the land use. And again, looking at what is most desirable for this property, staff would suggest that it is for commercial retail uses. And by rezoning this, it does encourage and or allow for the applicant and owner of the property to consider additional investments in commercial uses. And so staff does find that this, the rezoning to general business would be a desirable land use within the proposed area. Criteria number four is impact on property values. And staff finds that the rezone to general business would have no negative impact on property values in the area. And in fact, the rezone would actually more closely align with the existing use of the property and those in the immediate area. So this would actually support the uses in the area, wouldn't, it wouldn't have no negative impact. And criteria number five is responsible growth. Again, as I mentioned, this is an existing commercial use and additional investments in commercial uses make sense on this property. And so in terms of responsible growth, we do find that this would represent responsible growth and development to rezone the property to general business. With that then, staff recommendation and review of the rezoning requested general business. Lebanon planning staff recommends this petition be forwarded by the plan commission of the common council with a favorable recommendation. Just a little bit more on the, the recommendation, as, as you may recall, this is a multi-step process in terms of rezoning. So the plan commission is essentially advisory to the council. So your role here is to provide a recommendation on the rezone that then gets forwarded to the common council and then the common council will make the final determination on a rezone ordinance, whether to adopt and, and make the change or not. So that, thus then, your, your decision tonight would be a recommendation on, that would be forwarded to the council. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions from the commission for Ben?
Ben, can you refresh my memory a little bit? I mean, what would be the typical businesses in the general?
It would be focused more on commercial and retail. So it would be more on the commercial side, it'd be office uses, things like that. And then you, more towards retail, then you're looking at restaurants, fast food, other things like that that would fit in the commercial. So whereas in the light industrial, it's very much geared towards industrial uses and like hotels and other things are permitted there, but not necessarily the typical retail uses. So this, this more closely aligns, actually it, it makes subway a conforming use by rezoning it to general business.
And you could also have like insurance company out there or something else in an office.
Theoretically, there could, there could be like a multi-tenant building that could have maybe an insurance office or something like that in it or, or a medical office, dental office. It could be those things or it could be additional retail uses.
Pretty adjacent to that would be fine, yeah.
Yeah.
So subway now a non-conforming use?
Technically, yes. Yeah.
Because we like subway so much, that's why we had so many, that's why we let it go by, right?
Any additional questions from the commission? Any additional from the applicant or any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much. So again, this is an item that does have a public hearing, so I will officially open the public hearing on docket number 25-2, which is a rezone request from light industrial to general business. If you have any comments, please feel free to step to the microphone. Being a very large crowd of folks not headed towards the microphone, I will go ahead and close the public hearing officially. So we have opened, we have closed the public hearing. If there are not any additional questions for Ben or the applicant, I would entertain a motion.
Take a motion of docket 25-2 for favorable recommendation to the common council.
We have a motion and a second for a favorable recommendation to the common council. All those in favor, please signify with an eye. Eye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Thank you very much. I see no other business to come before us, so in perhaps the most exciting motion of the evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye. Eye. All those opposed, same sign. We are now adjourned. Thank you very much. We will see you at the February Plan Commission meeting.